Hello, everybody. I'm Jonathan Beeta, Director of Public Works. I'm here to discuss two capital project requests under Article Four of the Special Town Meeting for 2021. These projects are Warren Avenue Water Main Replacement, which is over Eel River, and the second one is Jordan Road Bridge over Route Three. The Warren Ave Water Main Project is 12-inch cast iron. It's a replacement of the water main, which was installed in 1958. Jordan Road is 8-inch cast iron, which was installed in 1956. It was brought to our attention, the reason why these are on the Special Town Meeting, from after bridge inspection by Mast dot, both water mains, the suspension systems and the water mains themselves are significantly corroded. They're missing insulation and they are a safety concern. We were not aware of these, you know, prior to, the reason why they're not on the annual. The Warren Ave request is for $390,000, and the Jordan Road request is for $558,000, both of which would be funded out of retained earnings in Water Enterprise. And with that, I'm just going to show a couple of photos and get into a little bit of detail for both of these projects. So this is a locust map showing Jordan Road Bridge, which is again is on Route Three by Exit Three. And again, we were notified by Mass DOT that the water main is in pretty rough shape. So this is a picture showing the water main underneath the Jordan Road Bridge. And again, this is 8-inch cast iron, and the picture really speaks for itself here. You can see the bridge girders and you can see those cross members that are significantly corroded. You can see the 8-inch cast iron main that is in pretty rough shape. There's a lot of alignment issues with this main as well that need to be corrected, which means that the pipe itself isn't straight underneath the bridge. The insulation is significantly corroded in a lot of places. It's not even there. Again, the overall cost of this project is $558,000. There's a little bit more in terms of traffic control, safety, and working with Mass DOT because of Route Three that increased the costs associated with this project. For the Warren Ave Route Three, everybody's familiar with Plymouth Long Beach. This is right across the street to the main access, to the beach. This bridge water main is significantly corroded due to the impacts of a lot of the storms that we deal with. We have the high tides that kind of wash over Warren Avenue. So this picture shows the bridge over Eel River on Warren Avenue. This water main is more of a suspension-type system, where you can see the rods that were pinned to the underside of the deck, holding up the water main. Again, this is a larger-sized main, 12-inch. This is more of a transmission main for us, serving, you know, the corridor on Warren Avenue. And you can see the entire suspension system is kind of rotted out, no insulation. There are alignment issues with this water main. And the overall cost of $390,000 would replace the water main and provide an entirely new suspension system and insulation system for the water main. So with that, those are the two projects on the special for DPW Water. They are important projects. Again, we were notified by Mass DOT just a couple of weeks ago, and we're acting as soon as possible. With the funding coming from the Special Town Meeting, we'd have immediate availability of funds to move the project forward. This would be through a bid for both of those projects. We're not sure how it would work in terms of having one contractor do both or separate contractors for each project, but that would kind of play out when we go through the bidding process. Thank you. And again, we'll be here to answer any questions up to and during town meeting. Thank you.
Tom Mar, Plymouth Airport Manager, and the Airport Commission is requesting the support of Town Meeting regarding the design permitting and bidding for the upgrade of the sewage treatment plant here at the Plymouth Airport. The treatment plant is an important component to attract aviation and non-aviation businesses to locate in the town of Plymouth and specifically on the Plymouth Municipal Airport. This view of the airport shows the buildings that are located on the airport. It's primarily in this north section of the airport. There's approximately 60 buildings located on airport property, both aviation and non-aviation, and they currently contribute approximately $460,000 per year in real estate taxes. Since the advent of the treatment plant, we've been able to attract approximately 12 additional buildings. And though, we also hope to be able to attract additional buildings for some 100 acres of property that the airport currently owns, and that would be for both aviation and non-aviation activities. The plant itself is located in the south part of the airport, and it is currently permitted for 25,000 gallons per day, which would meet the requirements going into the future for the development of the non-aviation and aviation areas. The need for the upgrades has to do with the fact that the treatment plant is now 20 years old, and it is starting to show its age due to the nature of the somewhat hostile environment that the equipment is in. And after doing studies with beta engineering and environmental partners, it's been determined that to protect the plant and to be able to carry it into the next 20 to 30 years, that there's a collection of upgrades that are required. We feel that this is very important so as to not only meet DEP permit, but then also to position the airport so as to be able to continue to attract buildings to be located on the airport and to help the tax base here at the town of Plymouth. The treatment plant currently is permitted with DEP for 25,000 gallons per day. The need for this particular upgrade has to do with creating a situation where we can carry this plant for the next 20 to 30 years. And this particular request, which is for the design permitting and bidding, we are requesting $240,000, and then would be coming back in the fall for the actual construction of the project.
2021 Special Town Meeting Article Six is an article to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer of available funds or borrow a sum of money to conduct the town-wide fire department and fire station feasibility study. The request is for $185,000, and the town will request proposals from qualified consulting firms to provide the fire station feasibility, facilities, and operational study for the Plymouth Fire Department. Now, the purpose of the study is to review the current station locations, the facilities, and the deployment of equipment, and to provide a long-term recommendation for fire station facilities and the infrastructure, taking into consideration the future growth that the town has planned. The recommendations will be made on alternative deployment models, if there are any recommended, with the anticipated effectiveness and efficiencies for the emergency and risk management in the delivery of services to the town of Plymouth. Now, last year, the article for funding of a new headquarters station was rejected. And although the uncertainty of the town finances due to the pandemic, I'm sure was a major factor, many of the town meeting members and residents want more assurances of the location of the station and the need for the station. So we want to investigate the future in terms of growth, where that growth will occur, and what the impact of that growth will be on the fire department. A headquarters station not only serves a section of town, but also was the main support hub for all the substations. So we have to get this part of it right. We have to get the headquarters station situated correctly. And we also want to make sure that the other stations are where they need to be in terms of for the future. Obviously, over the years, back in the 70s, when a lot of those stations were built and staffed, those were the neighborhoods that were growing. We're seeing a lot of those neighborhoods built out, but we're seeing new growth going in different areas. And we want to make sure that we're planning for those stations to be in the right locations. We are right now working on, with an architect and an owner's project management, on three of the current fire stations to bring them up to code and to correct some of the deficiencies in them, one of which is the West Plymouth Station, the Bourne Road Station, and the third one is the Mannheim Station. It's become apparent to the architects and the project managers that the Bourne Road Station location probably is too small for them to be able to do anything to make that facility any better. So there's a good possibility that we will have to abandon that location, and it's good to know exactly where we should be building these stations. So that's the request, and we hope to have a report back so that we can move forward in the future and make sure that everybody knows that we've chosen the right locations and the right models for our deployment of our apparatus and staffing.
Hi, I'm Melissa Riggi, and I'm presenting Special Town Meeting Article Seven. For some time now, the town manager, finance director, and select board members have been contemplating and discussing some type of dedicated revenue source for facilities management. In addition, at different times over the past few years, members of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and even you, Town Meeting members, have commented on this need. Special Town Meeting Article Seven begins that process. Approval of this article will accomplish two things. It establishes a building capital maintenance stabilization fund, and it moves $2.5 million from free cash to fund this building capital maintenance fund. What this really means is that there'll be funding available always to improve, fix, and work on our public buildings. And hopefully, we step away from what's been going on over the past five years, which is a real public discussion about how rundown many of the buildings have become. Now, any expenditure from this account will require Town Meeting action. The process of setting up a stabilization fund like this with a specific and special purpose has been done successfully before in Plymouth, specifically with the nuclear plant mitigation fund and the pavement management fund. If the article passes Town Meeting, our intent is to annually ask Town Meeting to move a portion of our Department of Revenue certified free cash into the fund. Although we can't yet identify exactly what percent that will be, you know, what will be recommended each year, the establishment of the fund itself will lend all of our goals to that annual discussion or a multi-year dedicated approach. So thank you, and we hope that you support Special Town Meeting Article Seven.
Thank you. Bill Kohan with the Community Preservation Committee. Today, the committee will be presenting its recommendations for Spring Town Meeting. Community Preservation Committee is recommending to the Spring Special Town Meeting Article Nine. Article Nine is a recommendation of the use of the CPA fund for the construction of a footbridge at the location of the Town Brook Proxet Preserve. This is a preserve that was acquired with CPA funding back in the early 2000s. Later, the Department of Marine and Environmental Affairs was able to secure grants to take down the dam and factory at this location, which was the Plimco factory, returning the Town Brook to a condition that it was its original condition, and making this preserve part of a network of foot trails that travel from our waterfront into the town forest. Crossing through this area, you would have to navigate over this bridge. This bridge does not have sidewalks, and the Office of Marine and Environmental Affairs would like to construct a footbridge at this location to allow hikers from our waterfront to pass through this location safely. As you can see, the bridge is small. It was renovated extensively in the 1990s, but does not have sidewalks. The footbridge would be placed on the east side of the bridge to allow hikers to make their way up along our Town Brook, along Billington Street, and over the footbridge. This is just before you get to Route Three underpass, the back entrance of Morton Park, which is our town forest. So you can see down the road, there's where we're trying to connect to. And obviously, this is not what you would, is a desirable way of hiking over a busy bridge. This is a look at Plimco property where the mill pond was located. The dam came down, and again, there was extensive restoration work done to the Town Brook at this location. So now it's become a scenic vista. Once where there had been a mill pond and a dam, now you have this typical New England scene of our Town Brook making its way through this neighborhood as it makes its way to Plymouth Harbor. And there again is the location of the old Plimco dam, just south of this footbridge that was constructed after the demolition of the dam. Again, Article Nine would set aside $80,000 for construction of a footbridge. The footbridge would improve safety hiking along our Town Brook as it intersects with Westerly Road and Billington Street just before the back entrance of Morton Park, which is part of our town forests, which has opportunities for linkage through the town forest into the state forest. And this is part of a 20-year effort to connect waterfront with Miles Standard Forest. A study that was done in the late 1990s outlined the importance of connecting the two natural resources, Miles Standard Forest with our waterfront. And over the last 20 years, there have been specific CPA acquisitions along our Town Brook to make that connection a reality. Partnering with the Office of Marine and Environmental Affairs, we've been able to secure grants and take down dams and restore our Town Brook to its natural condition. And this effort follows many, not only the Wishbone Plan as the study compiled, but also other plans that the town has done and compiled for our downtown, the Downtown Master Plan and other Town Brook restorations follow in the line of those goals. That completes my presentation for Article Nine.
Hi, I'm Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance for the Town of Plymouth. And I am here today to present to you the budget for the virtual town meeting, which is going to occur on April 3rd. I am going to present to you a slide presentation that I will go through and explain everything that I wanted to present to you today. This is my budget presentation for fiscal 2022. I'm also going to introduce you with some other items coming up in Town Meeting and also in this budget cycle. I'm presenting this to you on Tuesday, March 9th of 2021, for the presentation night, which is March 22nd, and then Town Meeting is April 3rd. This first slide is just an introduction again to the Financial Report Center, which is on the Finance Department's website. We have been working very hard in trying to put out on our website as much financial information and other information that may be helpful to Town Meeting members, employees, elected officials, townspeople, to try to answer any of their questions that they might have. I'd like you to go out to this website. I'm going to go there right now just quickly to show you some of the things that are out there. But this is our Financial Report Center. So audits, budget, debt information, our financial policies. The Financial Report section is got a lot of information on revenues, expenditures for the current year. It's got information for the prior years, revenues and expenditures, and other information. It's got our Schedule As. It's got our tax rate recaps. So I'd like you to take some time, some time, to go out onto the website and take a look at what we have here, because there is a lot of information. We also have a section on the CPA Fund, on the OPEB Fund. We have a section on special funds and other revenues. This includes meals tax, cannabis, the Environmental Affairs Fund, the short-term rental fee, transportation network fee. There's all kinds of information out here on our other stabilization funds, and then a glossary of terms that's provided by the Department of Revenue. We're really proud of this website, and we hope that you take a look at it. If you see anything that might be missing or something that you'd like to know about, and we can put it out there, please let me know. This next slide is just giving you an update on the Plymouth COVID-19 information. This is also out on our website. This is just a screenshot from the webpage. My accounting officer, Carrie Gillette, maintains this. She's identified our CARES Act money with the county, what we've submitted for reimbursement and gotten reimbursed, what's pending, and all other grants related to COVID-19 are listed out here that the town has received, or the school has received, or some of our other departments. This is a really great place to go to get information on COVID. This next slide is showing you on the webpage the Quick Links section, which includes all the Town Meeting information that is available to Town Meeting members. So you go to Quick Links, Town Meeting Information, and then that brings you to this page, where it will, on the header page, will include all the information for this current Town Meeting, important dates, to let you know what meetings are coming up regarding Town Meeting. And then included in the links, included on the webpage, is the warrants for the Spring Annual and Special, and then the reports and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee for the Spring Annual Town Meeting, for the Special Town Meeting, the Fiscal 22 Budget Book, and we have a link to the Fiscal 22 School Budget Book. And then as we go through Town Meeting, as we approach Town Meeting, we will add any supplements that pertain to Town Meeting. We will add the Advisory and Finance Minutes by Article supplement, and any other information that's needed for Town Meeting, you will find here on this Town Meeting page. And then after Town Meeting, we will have the motions as voted. And even prior to that, we will put up here the motions that will be coming to Town Meeting. So constantly look at this page to find the information pertinent to Town Meeting. So what I'm going to do, this link right here will take you to the Town Meeting page. And then this link over here is actually the Fiscal 22 Budget page on the Finance Department's website, which includes all of the budget recommendations, progression of them, starting back in November to currently the Advisory and Finance recommendations. And also included there are the reports and presentations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Each of them did a PowerPoint presentation at the budget hearing on February 24th, and those presentations are on the website. That's where you'll find them. So I will be uploading this presentation to the website so that you can get to these links and everything. This page right here is showing you what we are recommending for spending from free cash for the various articles and budgets that we will be voting on at Town Meeting. So our certified free cash that's available to us currently right now is $10,112,293. This was certified back on July 1st of 2020. We spent $15,000 at the Fall Town Meeting, and this is what's remaining right now. At the Special Town Meeting, we will be recommending Article 4C, the Airport Waste Water Treatment Plant upgrades, for $230,000. So next to each of these items is a link to the pertinent backup information or any other information that might be pertinent to that particular item. So we've included all of that. Article Six, the Townwide Fire Department Fire Station Feasibility Study for $185,000. Article Seven, the Facility Maintenance Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for $2.5 million. Article 10, the Charter Commission Expenses for $10,000. Nuclear Mitigation Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for $1 million. Pavement Management Debt Stabilization Fund for $697,473. So at the Special Town Meeting, we're recommending spend about $4.6 million. And at the Annual Town Meeting, we're going to transfer $500,000 in the budget article to the OPEB Trust Fund, and then in Article 9A, which is various capital project requests, for $3.3 million. That will leave a balance in free cash of $1.6 million going into year end and rolling over into the following fiscal year. So take some time to look at all of these links that are associated with these particular projects. Retained earnings balances and recommendations. These are the sewer, the enterprise fund retained earnings, similar to free cash in the general fund. But these are available funds in each enterprise fund for either capital or budget, help with rates, and those kinds of things. So this year, what we're recommending is to fund capital in the Annual Town Meeting under Article Nine for sewer, water, solid waste, and airport. And then capital in Article Four of the Special Town Meeting for water and airport. The Fiscal 2022 Operating Budgets by Fund. So this is Article Seven, A through F. Each fund is presented to Town Meeting in each of these articles. The general fund, all the enterprise funds. So the general fund is being recommended by the Advisory and Finance Committee, That is a year-over-year increase of 1.94%. Airport is being recommended in Article Seven E at $2,465,387, which is a decrease of 5.68%. Sewer is being recommended at $8,185,07, which is a decrease of 5.96%. Water recommendation is $5,023,686, an increase of 3.393%. Solid waste is being recommended at $748,848, for an increase of 4.68%. And cable is being recommended at $1,590,000, for a decrease of 5.64%. So some of the takeaways from here is the sewer is decreasing due to a decrease in the debt service. Water is increasing due to an increase in debt service for some of the projects that have happened. Solid waste is increasing due to an increase in disposal rates for our contract with Covanta. And the cable budget is being decreased just based on having this enterprise fund for a couple of years now, and just reflecting the budget at what the actual has been happening. On the general fund side, we will go into some more highlights for those particular budgets. On the airport side, the decrease is primarily due to a decrease in the fuel budget. Some good highlights for the general fund. The PEC agreement has been finalized and signed with the PEC Committee. Fall Town Meeting will reflect any changes for the Fiscal 22 after open enrollment in May. A lot of the changes that happened with the PEC agreement are really unknown right now as to how it's going to affect the budget. We'll really have a better idea after open enrollment, because a new health insurance plan with a high deductible had been introduced. Also, there has been some changes to the Medicare Part B reimbursement for future retirees. And it'll be like each year, those will have some effect on the budget, but just not really known at this time. There's a link in this presentation to that PEC agreement, which is on the Human Resources webpage. In this budget, we've also done some restoration of some of the cut positions on the town side. We've recommended to add back a part-time in finance to full-time in library, a full-time from Memorial Hall, full-time for cemetery, and a part-time for public health. What we're not doing at this time is there are equivalent of 11 positions still not funded in the budget that were cut due to the COVID budget that we are in currently in fiscal '21. This included four DPW facility maintenance positions, two highway positions, one and a half positions in the airport. one and a half positions in the airport, three part-times in police, fire, and planning and development, and half of the internal auditor and finance department. Included in this budget is a recommendation to implement portions of the IT Strategic Plan. There is a link in this presentation to the Strategic Plan, which is on the IT website. So what's included in this budget is two full-time positions and some expense money in the budget. Included in this budget is an increase to the Salary Reserve Account of approximately $784,000, which is going to be earmarked for the school in case it is needed for salary support. Included in this budget is principal and interest for a bond issue that we plan on doing in June of 2021. This bond issue will include the fire station in North Plymouth, the maritime facility, and will include other projects that have been voted and completed at town meeting, from town meeting. Also included in this budget is the White Horse Beach District Sticker Program and Enforcement. Other highlights of this budget are all of the collective bargaining agreements are expected, will expire June 30th, 2021 for both the town and the school. So there are no contract increases or any changes in contracts in this budget going into Fiscal 22. Also, the pilot payment for Pilgrim expires June 30th fiscal, June 30th, 2021, for Fiscal 21. So we are currently in negotiations with Holtek for a successor pilot agreement, which will bring us, which will start for Fiscal 22 and beyond. Included in this budget is a pension valuation of January 1, 2020, which included a 5% increase for Fiscal 22 and 23 before going back to the normal 8% increase that had been incurring. Included here is a link to the Plymouth Retirement's webpage, which includes that valuation report. And this amortization schedule does pay off the unfunded liability for the retirement system in the year 2035, which is five years before the requirement of 2040. Also included in this budget in the Sewer Enterprise Fund is the closeout of the sewer emergency debt with Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. So if you remember, town meeting authorized $48.2 million for the sewer emergency replacement of the force main and a redundant force main. So the included, what has happened since then is we have had some settlements with Veolia through court action and through negotiation of about almost $23 million. We've also done our first loan with Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for $11.3 million. And at that time, Clean Water Trust gave us basically a grant of $744,000. So remaining to borrow, which is the final borrowing that we'll do for this project, is approximately $13.2 million. We're scheduled to go into this long-term borrowing in April of '21 this year. So included in the Sewer Enterprise Budget is the principal and interest on that final borrowing. And at that time, we will also settle up with the trust and turn over the settlement monies that are included in this spreadsheet. This pie chart just shows you the budget, the $258 million budget, broken down into each fund. So the General Fund primarily makes up 93% of the total budget. Sewer is the next at 3%. Water is at 2%. And then the other funds are basically around between 0 and 1% of the total. Shows you the budgets by type of expense. So what's being recommended for debt service in total for General Fund and each Enterprise Fund is $22.5 million, which is an increase of 0.75%. Salaries is an increase of 2.94%. Fringe benefits is an increase of 4.13%. And all other expenses is a decrease of 4.73%. So the budget is an overall increase of 1.59%. This pie chart is showing you that same total budget with each type of expense and what percentage it makes up of the total budget. So salaries is 49% of the total budget. Fringe benefits is 24%. All other expenses is 18%. And debt service is at 9%. This is another way of looking at the total budget of $258 million. We break up each of those items by the town and the school. So the town budgets total $109.2 million, which is made up of the salaries, fringe benefits, all other expenses, and debt service on the town side. On the school side, the school total is $149.4 million, which includes the salaries, fringe benefits, all other expenses, and debt service. This particular budget also includes the $784,000 that's been set aside in the Salary Reserve for school salaries. At the Advisory and Finance Committee Budget Hearing, Vice Chair Harry Helm, who was the Chairman of Subcommittee F for the School Department, included in his presentation, he discussed the net school spending requirement or net school spending for the School Department for Plymouth and how we compare to other towns. In his presentation, which is included here by way of a link over here, Advisory and Finance Subcommittee Report F, he notated that Plymouth was over the required net school spending. So what I wanted to do here was sort of show you what that means. So each year, the end-of-year report is required to be filed with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the School Department puts together a report including all of their spending. And then included in that report is the spending on the city and town side, which we provide that information. We have to track that information on our side, and we have to provide that to them and include that on the end-of-year report. And then DESI has a computation where they calculate what our net school spending compliance is. The numbers that are reflected here are the budgeted numbers from Fiscal 20. So you'll notice that the Fiscal 20 budget is not necessarily the budget that was voted by town meeting. And that's because the calculation for net school spending doesn't include certain expenditures. It does not include transportation. It does not include debt service and some other things. So basically, the calculation for net school spending for Fiscal 20, based on the numbers that were submitted by the town of Plymouth, our net school spending was $132.9 million. According to DESI, the calculated required net school spending is $95 million, which shows that Plymouth is above the net school spending. I've also included in here a link to the CMR 603, where it discusses school finance education laws and particularly Section 10.06, describes to you what net school spending requirements are. So there are several communities in Massachusetts who are above net school spending, similarly to Plymouth. However, there are some that don't meet their school, net school spending requirements, and they have to go through a process of making sure that they get back to that point because your state aid will be cut. And you know, there are things that they'll do to you. They have to make sure that you're meeting your net school spending requirements. But this, I just wanted to provide a little bit more information for you. And I'm sure if anyone has any questions regarding this, that the School Department would probably be the resource to answer any of those questions. Other amounts that need to be raised. Now, these are amounts that are not voted at town meeting, but they are raised on our tax rate recap. And they include the cherry sheet assessments, which are the Charter School Assessment, which is primarily the bulk of this number. And this number is actually, what I've done is I've taken the final number for Fiscal 21, and I've added approximately 7% to that number because this continually increases every year. The cherry sheet offsets is just money that comes into the town and then goes over its library aid. And then currently, right now, when we go into the budget season, we always budget for the average snow and ice deficit, which is based on like a 15-year average, and that's $657,986. And it looks like we may go over this. We haven't gone over it yet, but the season's not over yet. And so we're just sort of waiting to see what's going to happen with that. And then we also appropriate the overlay reserve, which is the allowance for abatements and exemptions for taxpayers at $1.2 million. So revenue to support the General Fund budget. This includes property taxes estimated to be at about 78%. We rely, as you know, very heavily on property taxes to fund our budget. And the reason for that is that the other revenues that support the budget are just, they're just a very small piece of the pie. State aid currently right now is looking like about 13% of the total. And years ago, that used to be more than that. However, the state has, you'll see in the next slide, has had some challenges in increasing our state aid over the years. The other item, which is very important to fund the budget, is our local receipts. And local receipts includes several various items, motor vehicle excise, investment income, licenses and permits, just other revenue sources that help fund the operating budget. And then we have other available funds that help with the budget. And then also indirect costs, which is a transfer from the Enterprise Funds to help fund those indirect costs. So state aid, and a lot of these revenue slides, I'm gonna, that I have in here say "subject to change." And what that means is, is it just hasn't been finalized yet. State aid, usually we find out in June, right before the beginning of the fiscal year. This past year, we didn't find out what our state aid was until after we set our tax rate in December. So hopefully, we will find out in June what our state aid is. So right now, we're basically level funding state aid. The other thing that's happening on the state aid side and also on the expense side is we have finished paying improvements, construction improvements to Manomet and South Elementary. These projects were from years ago, and those projects were being reimbursed by the MSBA. And the debt in the, on the debt service side of the budget has ended, and then the reimbursement is also ending. So that's actually at a zero in Fiscal 22. So this just sort of shows you the level of state aid. It's been probably almost over 20 years now since our state aid. And this is net state aid. So this is our revenue minus the assessments. So it's the net state aid because the revenue has been increasing, but the assessments has been increasing at a much higher rate than the revenue. So the net of, net effect of this is really almost like a level funding of state aid over the last 20 years or so, which is, which is quite sad. I know that, I don't think it's going to get any better in the near future because of the pandemic and due to the state meeting their obligations through grant money from the federal government for CARES Act for COVID-19, and also the state dipping into their stabilization fund to help meet their state aid requirements to cities and towns. So it's really sort of a wait-and-see game as to what is going to happen with state aid. I know that they have made efforts to like change the Chapter 70 formula to try to increase state aid to cities and towns. But the state aid is always subject to appropriation by the legislature. So we'll wait and see on that. As far as local receipts, these again are subject to change based on our year-end results. So right now, this is our budgeted local receipts for Fiscal 22. We are estimating at least a 1.5% increase on the overall estimated receipts. Some of them might, are going to have increases. Some of them might be level funded. But based on what our year-end results are for Fiscal 21, those will be revisited. For example, the other excise, which includes the cannabis. So this is our first year in receiving the retail excise, cannabis excise at 3%. So when we know what that number is for that, for the fiscal year, then we'll estimate a number going into Fiscal 22 for that. This right here basically shows the January 2021, where we stand right now with our budgeted local receipts and what has actually come in. And this is a report that I showed you at the beginning, which is on our financial, on the Finance Department website in the Financial Reports section. It's the January Revenues Report. And I just did a little snippet of the local receipts. So you'll see each of the items that we budgeted for in the Fiscal 21 budget and what we've actually taken in so far through January. Now, the target for January should be that we're at 58% collected. And you'll see over on the right-hand side that some of these revenues have exceeded the 58% and some are below the 58%. The ones that are below, there's a reason why. For example, motor vehicle excise, we just mailed out the bills for Fiscal 21. There's a due date on them, I believe, near the end of March. So that is why that is only a 21% collected. We've, we've been collecting on some prior-year motor vehicles, and that's what the, basically the $1.7 million is from. So we'll see that number uptick as we go through the month of February and March and into April. So we'll see what happens with that one. I do know that the, the big commitment is what we call it in the one that we just sent out, compared to the same time last year when we sent out the big commitment. This year's was approximately a quarter of a million dollars less than it was the year before. So we actually decreased the budget for motor vehicle excise this year with the COVID budget because we knew that due to the pandemic that these, that the local receipts were going to be down. So that's sort of an indication of that. Also, some of these items, other items you'll notice, the other excise is actually coming in much greater than expected. And that is due to the cannabis. and that is due to the um cannabis excise. The Department of Revenue would not allow you to include cannabis excise in your budgeted numbers until you've actually had a full year of receipts. So that was not included in the budget uh for fiscal twenty one, but we will include that in our budget for fiscal twenty two, as I said earlier. Um, penalties and interest of coming in a little bit higher, and that's basically due to what happened last year was the deferral of payments. People were allowed to um defer and not pay um their bills when they were due, but they were due by June thirtieth, and then there were several people that um waited until over the summer to pay, so they had to pay um penalties and interest on that. So that came in a little bit higher. Um, it was looking like it's coming in a little bit higher. So when we finish out the fiscal year um this year, we'll see, you know, how we do compare to these um budgeted amounts, and we'll reevaluate those as we go into the fall and setting our tax rate and, and make any adjustments accordingly. Also, I just wanted to point out that in your budget book on page the budget book that's online and the one that you'll get mailed to you, on page sixteen of that budget book is a ten year um actual revenue history for the town of Plymouth, which is, includes state aid, local receipts and property taxes. So you can see on there the various items um that are similar to this and how they fared over the last ten years. Um, these are the other available funds that help support the budget. Basically, these funds are um receipts reserved for appropriation, like the Title V loan program, which pays for debt service and administration of that program. Um, all of the fifty three app, fifty three E and a half revolving accounts, which fund full time sa, or uh, which fund positions that are full time, that have benefits. So the benefits are charged back to those appropriate revolving funds, and they get included in this other available funds. Um, the other funds that we use for the budget are cemetery perpetual care. We fund approximately thirty five thousand dollars a year to fund the cemetery budget. Municipal waterways, we use about a hundred and thirty thousand of that to fund the Harbor Master budget. And then we, uh, the, the Waterway Fund is paying for the debt service on the T Wharf, uh, part of the debt service on the T Wharf. The pavement management debt fund, that is an estimate of what we'll need for the pavement management plan, principal and interest. Uh, but we are doing a new bond issue in June, so that number may get adjusted. Um, the meals tax, that fund is used to fund the principal and interest for the town hall project. And the one point one nine million is actually just a little bit shy of what is needed, but we will be getting in um two, two to three more quarters of receipts before we go to town meeting in the fall, so we'll be able to adjust that. Um, we also have um premiums on the debt exclusion projects that are used every year to fund the debt on that, on the project, and the half a million that we're doing for OPEP. Um, this lists the indirect costs that are being transferred from the enterprise fund into the general fund to help support um those costs that are associated with the enterprise funds that are paid for in the general fund. So the enterprise funds reimburse the general fund for those costs. And then this is the property tax estimate, which is based on current year value, which obviously is subject to change once we do uh finish our evaluation and um new growth assessments and everything. So property tax, the revenue that we need for property taxes to fund this budget, and this is a balanced budget going into town meeting, um, is a hundred and ninety seven point two million, which is an increase over the previous year of six point eight million, or approximately three point five eight percent increase. This is obviously subject to change um based on if state aid changes in any way, if state aid is increased or state aid is decreased. Also on local receipts, if we make adjustments to local receipts and we increase those, then property tax revenue will get decreased. So those are some of the things that um are subject to change. So this is just sort of um encompassing all those items that I've said that are subject to change, and that will have a better idea as we go into the fall annual town meeting. Um, we'll finalize the budget based on the debt service for the actual bond issue that we do in June. We'll know exactly what our principal and interest is, so we'll be able to make adjustments to the budget in the fall for that. Um, I have included some very conservative um numbers in there, so hopefully that adjustment will be a decrease to the budget. And then also um open enrollment is gonna happen in May, so any changes due to the new PEC agreement will have a better idea what those are, and we'll probably make some adjustments to the budget in the fall for that. Um, also, I mentioned that all of the CBAs expire, so the town and school um will be entering into negotiations with all the unions. And if there are any settlements, those may be brought to town meeting in the fall. Um, but that's still unknown at this time. Um, state aid, as I mentioned earlier, um, hopefully we'll know in June what that's going to look like. And hopefully, it's either level funded or it's increased. Um, but that remains to be seen right now. The governor's budget that he proposed, which is in your budget book on the state aid um page, which is page fifteen, I believe. Um, his number is a slight increase um over the um state aid for twenty one. Um, local receipts, again, as I described earlier, we'll look at how we did for the fiscal year and can we adjust those? And, and I think we can. Um, property taxes obviously will, will, the estimate on that will change due to any state aid or local receipt changes, and then also on the value um certification of value and new growth. Um, and I just want to mention that, I mean, we're not alone. Um, all cities and towns are going through this same struggle uh with the pandemic, with the unknowns regarding um state aid and the unknowns regarding local receipts. We had to make several adjustments to our local receipts this past fiscal year. And you'll see that if you look at the ten year um history of local receipts on page sixteen in your budget books as compared to what we budgeted for this year, and you'll see, you know, how we're doing. Um, so everyone's going through the same thing. Um, what I want to leave with you today is um just recently, the Massachusetts Department of Revenue came out with their um monthly city in town um um brochure. They sort of send it through an email to all um, all cities and towns. And there was an article in there on the fiscal year twenty twenty one average single family residential property tax bill. And for fiscal twenty one statewide, the average is six thousand three hundred and seventy four dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and ninety seven dollars over fiscal twenty. So in, in addition to that, the average value of a single family home is four hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. So um, that's what the statewide average is. And I wanted to show you how Plymouth compared to that. So over on the right hand side of this slide is a page from the tax, the fiscal twenty one tax classification hearing that our principal of assessor did this past December. There's a link to it down here, so you can, you can click this link and, and get to that. Um, so I, in Plymouth, the fiscal twenty one single family value was three hundred and eighty nine thousand, which was an increase over the previous year fifteen thousand. And, but less than the statewide average. So the statewide average for single family home is four hundred and sixty eight thousand. So Plymouth, even though it was an increase of fifteen thousand, we are still under the statewide average of four hundred and sixty eight thousand. The single family tax bill in Plymouth for fiscal twenty one was six thousand two eighty six fifty five, which was an increase over the previous year of a hundred and seventy six dollars and sixty cents. Still below the statewide average of six thousand three hundred and seventy four dollars. Um, so I think we compare very well as compared to our, our counterparts, that we still are um less than the average or around the average tax bill in Massachusetts. Um, so I think that's a, that's sort of a good thing. Um, and I know taxes, you know, people are struggling with their taxes, and I understand that, and, and we're doing our best. But I just wanted to just show you these things from um the city in town um information from Department of Revenue. So for fiscal twenty one, the single family tax bill, this is Plymouth as it compares to other cities and towns in Massachusetts. So that light green um that Plymouth is right here, sort of this light green equates to this area right here. Our tax bill is inside here, the five thousand to six thousand three hundred and seventy four. So there's eighty two communities that are in this particular uh range. So you can see as we compare similarly to other um towns on the south shore and the Cape, and then we are less than um the towns of Kingston, Plymouth, Plimpton, Duxbury, Marshfield. Um, so, you know, this, it's, it's sort of a, um, a picture in your mind, you know, this. And then there are other communities, obviously, that are, are much higher than us. Um, this slide right here just shows you that aver, that same single family tax bill for fiscal twenty one and what the average increase was and where Plymouth sits as compared to other communities. So this is the real light green area. Uh, Plymouth's increase, as you remember, was a hundred and seventy six dollars, which is within this range, the zero to one hundred and ninety seven dollar increase. And then this is how we compare to other cities and towns in Massachusetts. So I'm going to end my presentation right there. Um, and I will be available um to answer any questions that anyone may have on the presentation. And as I said, I will include, uh, we will upload the presentation that I made today to the website, to the um quick links town meeting information page, so that you can also um review it there and um have access to all of those links that are in that presentation. Thank you very much, and looking forward to um virtually seeing you at town meeting.
Hi, everyone. This is David Gould, Director of the Department of Marine and Environmental Affairs. This is a presentation on the Townworth Bulkhead Project. For those of you familiar with the site, um, this area is located between Wood Seafood and Lobster Hut. It supports Townworth Way. The pedestrian boardwalk along the harbor in access to gangways and floats provides parking for the seafood markets and the restaurants in the areas. This is a view back uh to the land from the harbor, and you can see that parking is actually on a pile supporting system. Uh, most folks, when they walk apart there, um, may not be uh cognizant of the fact that you're actually on uh such a system. Um, but there's a bulkhead uh behind that um that supports Townworth Way and the roadway uh behind it. All of this structure that you're seeing, so the, the piles, the cross bracing, the pile caps, the concrete caps and the railings would all be replaced. The bulkhead, which is wood, would be encased in concrete uh to provide longevity going forward. This is a closer up view showing uh all of those structures in place supporting the roadway and the parking and the boardwalk. And in regards to the status and timeframe of the project, the project is already designed. It is already permitted. We were recently awarded a Seaport Economic Council for one million dollars, which is a maximum award towards a project. It is contingent upon the town providing the match, which is three hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. If we were successful in getting approval, the project would be bid out this summer and would be ready for fall construction. Construction would go through the fall and winter and uh wrap up in the spring before the next tourist season. Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. I'm David Gould, Director of the Department of Marine and Environmental Affairs, and I'm here to present the presentation on the Townworth dredging project. The Townworth dredging project would be the last component, last phase of the dredging within Plymouth Harbor, now that Amicore has completed their work, and we have completed two of the three sites that we intended. As you recall, because of some of the issues with the permitting of the sediment disposal, we were able to, only able to complete dredging around State Pier and around T Wharf. So this last phase would be around Townworth. It would be approximately two point six million dollars, of which the town is applying for one point three million reimbursement from the condominium. It would be the dredging of twenty two thousand three hundred and fifty cubic yards of material um over a footprint of about ninety nine thousand square feet. The dredging program uh applications are open now, and we should hopefully hear back later this spring. Uh, if we do not receive the funding from the state, then the project would simply not go forward at this time.
The Community Preservation Committee is making recommendations to our spring annual town meeting, Article sixteen A, B, C, E, and F. Article sixteen A uh is the creation of uh sixteen affordable rental units um on Summer Street. There is a, a property that has been constructed and permitted on Summer Street. Uh, and uh the applicant, uh, the owner of the property who has constructed these units, uh, has uh offered to sell and buy down sixteen of his units to Affordable. And uh this property on Summer Street, people will be familiar with it. Uh, it's on the other side of Market Basket. Uh, the property uh has been under uh construction for the last year. The last phase of this construction will be the creation of a landscaping plan uh that's dedicating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to improving uh the appearance as you make your way from uh downtown Plymouth along Summer Street in, into the neighborhood of West Plymouth. The units would be overseen by the Plymouth Housing Authority in terms of its qualifying uh process. They would qualify people to be in the unit. Uh, the uh buildings would be owned by the private contractor and developer who would take care of uh the property in terms of its maintenance. Uh, the housing authority would be qualifying people for occupancy. This is a very similar uh model that we used on State Road in uh, in Manomet a couple of years back on a, on a property, a similar uh model is used to create affordable units. This is an efficient way of partnering with the private developer uh to create units and uh in, look into the future on their maintenance and their care in a manner that's efficient. This is a look at those units with the upgraded landscaping plan that's been provided along uh the uh Summer Street corridor into West Plymouth. Um, they have a berm that's planned to be built and uh substantial plantings planted in this location to give a buffer uh from this residential complex um along Summer Street. There's not only these affordable units, but there's market rate units uh that are available in this complex. So it's a mix of market and affordable, which is a model that seems to work nicely in a, in a village setting. Uh, here are some of the market units that completes the presentation on Article sixteen A. Sixteen B uh is a recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee uh to borrow, to pay off the remaining borrowing balance for the National Pilgrim Memorial Meeting House. There was money that was borrowed a few years back for the for the roof restoration, the siding restoration, which was part of a community preservation recommendation a few years back. This would pay that balance down. Article sixteen C is a recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee to fund the the extension to the North Plymouth Seaside Rail Trail. There's a currently, there's a rail trail that runs from Hedge Road in North Plymouth at Cottage Park all the way down to Nelson Park. That trail was constructed in the early two thousands with funding from various sources, one of them being the Community Preservation Act Fund that helped pay for the original construction of the trail. This would be a continuation of that. The Office of Marine Environmental Affairs has sought a grant to help pay for this project. The total project cost is four hundred thousand. The request is four hundred thousand, but we're receiving a reimbursement grant of one hundred thousand. This will extend the trail past Nelson Park, over Nelson Street, onto Lothrup Street, extending the trail closer to our waterfront, expands the use of the property in the trail. The Town of Plymouth had an active train yard that ran from North Plymouth into downtown Plymouth. This is the original train from the eighteen forty five, the Governor Bradford Engine. And as you can see, the Governor Bradford Engine would travel into Plymouth from North Plymouth. Down this blue line is the existing rail trail. Where it changes to yellow, this is the proposed extension. And the extension takes you from Nelson Park, the parking area, along this location over Nelson Street, where there'll be extensive traffic calming features designed into the crossing of this location. Obviously, as people hike to this location, there are safety concerns that are addressed by the design of the hiking trail as you get to Lothrup Street for the hikers. But there's also design features for traffic that is coming down Nelson Street. They will be accommodating the acknowledgement of a trail in this area and the slowing of traffic so people can cross in this location. At a certain point, when you cross Nelson Street, you continue down to Lothrup Street and that takes you closer to our waterfront for hikers that are looking to go directly to the waterfront or people from the waterfront looking directly to hike along the trail to North Plymouth. This gives a easier form of access. This is the orientation of the site from above. These photographs are from the fifties, taken at a point when the train was more active or active in this location. You can see right here the crossing of Lothrup Street and coming from the north and heading, excuse me, Nelson Street, heading towards Lothrup Street. And here again is Nelson Park. And then over here, you can see the train, the train coming into Plymouth and there's again Nelson Street into to the north of that is, or the west of that is Benny's Plaza. Here again is the trail coming when it was an active rail yard, coming to the crossing area. And again, from the air, making your way to Lothrup Street. And then you're looking there at the foot of Lothrup Street where the trail would end at the beginning of the old railroad yard, which is now the sixteen twenty Hotel Quincy College in Plymouth Village Landing. That is at that location. Again, you have a better idea of how the train hiking area comes right down to Nelson Park here, makes its way all the way to Lothrup Street, which is right here. So you can see the extension that we're creating to get people closer to down here where the state boat ramp is, a closer connection. And there's a picture of our old train station. Here's a view of today of the existing rail trail coming into Nelson Park from the north. And then it, if you look towards Nelson Street, you'll see the abandoned train tracks and you can see where there is some continued foot activity, even though the trail has ended, people continue to walk along the tracks to Nelson Street. As you can see, this is the approach to Nelson Street where people are actively hiking, even though there isn't a trail there, people are going through this location. There's safety issues and concern in terms of cutback of the growth and also the approach to Nelson Street, the safety levels concerned. So people are already hiking through this area. This trail extension would make it much safer for them to make their way to Nelson Street and cross Nelson Street. And here at Nelson Street, we're looking back to the north where you can see that people are currently continuing the rail trail hike past Nelson Park to Nelson Street. And then here's the other side of Nelson Street looking towards Lothrup where it's overgrown, which would be reclaimed for the hiking trail to continue to Lothrup Street. And this is Lothrup Street. You're looking at Lothrup Street at the end of the extension. This area was improved during renovations to the Riverware property. The developer of the Riverware property offered to improve this end of the rail trail. So we already have a trailhead there where people can park their cars, get out and hike all the way up to the North Plymouth area and then hike all the way back down. So there is a small trailhead at this location and that continues, that concludes the presentation, as you can see here, of the extension of the North Plymouth Seaside Rail Trail. Article sixteen E is a conservation endowment fund that we are establishing to cover the cost of nearly twenty four conservation restrictions. Over the years, the Community Preservation Committee makes recommendations to Town Meeting for the acquisition of land. As a requirement of the statute, that land must receive the conservation restriction. A town cannot hold a restriction on itself. It has to find a outside partner to hold that restriction. The Wildlands Trust of Southeastern Massachusetts has been that partner over the last twenty years. The Wildlands Trust, when they accept a restriction, there's a burden of enforcement over a period of time where they have to go out and examine the land to make sure that the land is being utilized as intended. And that burden, they require a one-time endowment. So when they accept a restriction, there's a calculation of based on how many acres, what that one-time endowment will cost. We recently had about twenty four conservation restrictions that had not been filed with the registry and we worked with the Wildlands Trust, the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs and the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs with Commonwealth of Massachusetts to come up with these restrictions. They're being filed and now as they filed, the endowment is due to the Wildlands Trust. And again, this will help the Town of Plymouth become compliant with the requirement of having the restrictions on filed in terms of seeking other grants in the future. So this is about a complacency issue. And so the committee is making this recommendation for this expenditure to just cover the cost of the conservation restrictions, which concludes the presentation for Article sixteen E. Article sixteen F is the Community Preservation Act Fund account balances for fiscal year twenty twenty two. And this is a required administrative article that we do every spring to set aside the income of the CPA, ten percent for housing, ten percent for historical preservation and ten percent for open space acquisitions. There is another component of the CPA fund for administrative activities of the implementation of the Community Preservation Act. Four percent is being requested in this budget proposal under Article sixteen F. And those costs, we could request up to five. We keep it to four. That's a tradition of the committee to always be conservative on its request on administrative activities through Town Meeting. Those funds that we do set aside in the administrative account is to handle the legal work of preparing for Town Meeting, the activities after Town Meeting, appraisals of applications that come to us, signage at locations that have received CPA funding, and also looking at safe access, emergency historical preservation activities along active CPA applications. So the committee utilizes funds in an efficient way to make sure that the CPA recommendations that are going through Town Meeting warrant the appropriate level of attention when it comes to these matters. And that concludes the presentation for the Community Preservation Articles under the annual Town Meeting Article sixteen F. Thank you.
Hello. My name is John Judge and I'm representing Pine Hills LLC, the land development company that has been developing the Pine Hills. It's been over twenty years since Plymouth Town Meeting approved the Osmond zoning bylaw and the Pine Hills Development Plan, which really enabled this experiment, this mixed-use community, this innovative way of developing to take place. In short, none of this would have been possible without Town Meeting. What I'd like to do is give a little recap of where we are today and then turn the presentation over to Tony Green, Managing Partner of Pine Hills LLC. In the most recent data produced by the town's assessing department, which was January one, twenty nineteen, just about twenty four months ago, Pine Hills had created one point four billion dollars in new assessed value in Plymouth. And over recent years, we have been creating about a hundred million dollars annually in new net assessed value. Again, as of twenty four months ago, Pine Hills and all of its residential and commercial development had paid the Town of Plymouth a hundred and seventy four million dollars in local property taxes. For those Town Meeting members who were here twenty years ago, when this all began, you may recall that at the time, it was estimated that at full buildout, Pine Hills would create six point four million dollars in net property taxes to the Town of Plymouth. That's over and above expenses, keeping in mind that the requirement of the Osmond zoning bylaw is that all utilities are private. So the roads are built privately, maintained privately, as is electric, gas and water and sewer. Now, fast forward to today, again, as of twenty four months ago, Pine Hills was contributing about twenty four million dollars in local property taxes, clearly far outpacing the six point four million that had been predicted twenty years ago. And Pine Hills is still growing and adding new net assessment and new net property taxes along the way each year. The town, a few years ago, contracted with John Connery and Associates to produce what was called the Connery Report. And the Connery Report looked at what the economic benefit has been to Plymouth of the Pine Hills. And at that time, the Connery Report showed that ninety percent of every tax dollar flows to the bottom line in terms of cash because Pine Hills has taken care of all the utilities privately and has never been a burden to the Plymouth Public School System, which we'll get into a little bit later. Pine Hills has also created about three dozen businesses that employ hundreds of full and part-time workers here at the Pine Hills. And the home builders, eleven home builders here at Pine Hills, have been each year employing hundreds of building trades workers from plumbers to electricians to framers to plasterers and painters and the like. So we feel as if the Pine Hills has been very much part of the economic development engine of Plymouth over the past two decades. With that little update as to where we've come to this point, I would like to turn the presentation over now to Tony Green, who is the Managing Partner of Pine Hills LLC.
Hi, I'm Tony Green, Managing Partner of the Pine Hills. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to Plymouth Town Meeting about the two warrant articles that are before you. As we near the end of this more than twenty-year journey, we're appreciative of the chance the Town Meeting gave us for the Pine Hills to even be here. The two zoning articles before you, one changes the zoning in two respects related to contiguity and the number of homes. And then the second article takes those two changes, should they be approved, and changes the development plan to reflect those same two changes. So to put all of that in context, we'll go to a plan so you can, to show what we're describing. This is the Pine Hills. This is Route Three right here and what was Exit Three, now Exit Seven right here. This is the Village Green Commercial District where the Blueberry Muffin and Mama Mia's in Mirbo in the market are. This is Clark Road turning to Beaver Dam Road, Old Sandwich Road unpaved, running through Pine Hills from here south, all the way down to Ellisville. This is the Great Island Neighborhood, Great Island Pond. And here is existing town-owned open space in Gray. This is Briggs, the south piece. This is Briggs, the north piece. This is the Manhamet Landfill, also owned by the town. And you can see how Briggs North and Briggs South don't touch. There's this hundred and four point eight acre piece in the middle and that is the subject of these zoning, a part of the subject of these zoning articles. Should Town Meeting choose to change the definition of contiguity so that this hundred and four acres would be added to Osmond, it would be forever protected as open space and Pine Hills would have a hundred and four new permits to build within the buildable areas already determined by Town Meeting elsewhere in Osmond. So the actual wording of the change in zoning is in your packet and also on the screen. The first piece of the change of zoning is amending Clause One in the definition of Osmond in Section two oh seven dash three B. This is the area where land that is contiguous is defined. Today, land that is across Route Three or across town-owned roads is considered contiguous. This zoning article would make it so that land that is connected by town-owned open space would also be considered contiguous. This is what would make the hundred and four point eight acres contiguous to the rest of Osmond. The second change in the zoning article is amending the same section, two oh seven three, but Table thirteen, which is intensity of uses. And what we are asking is to reduce the number of planned retirement by a hundred and forty nine and to increase limited occupancy community by a hundred and forty nine. Planned retirement homes are required for one occupant over the age of fifty five to live in the home and there is no limit on the number of bedrooms or where the bedrooms may be. Limited occupancy community homes have a maximum of three bedrooms and the master bedroom must be on the first floor, except in the Village Green District. So no increase in the total number of homes, but a swap of type from planned retirement to limited occupancy community. On the screen and in your packets is a page titled Planned Retirement. There are nine hundred and twenty planned retirement permits with a fifty five plus deed restriction, which means that at least one occupant living in the home must be over the age of fifty five. All but a hundred and forty nine planned retirement permits have been sold and occupied to date. In two thousand and one, there were approximately point four two school-aged children per household in Plymouth. And in the presentation to Town Meeting back then, we made the same assumption for future homes at the Pine Hills, which would have projected more than twelve hundred students being added to the system. For the current school year, per the Plymouth School Department, there are forty four students enrolled in the Plymouth Public Schools who live at the Pine Hills. The cost per student for those forty four students is seventeen thousand five hundred and forty eight dollars, so that the total is seven hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, which is obviously a fraction of the nearly twenty four million. total is $772,000, which is obviously a fraction of the nearly $24 million in annual property tax revenue from the Pine Hills. It is this low student population that is one of the main reasons why Pine Hills is so tax-positive. There are fewer kids going to school. The conversion to limited occupancy community dwellings results in additional restrictions to those permits. They would be limited to three bedrooms per home, and master bedrooms are required on the first floor, except for the homes in the Village Green District. These restrictions do not apply to planned retirement dwellings.
The benefits of these warrant articles would be as follows. Increased property tax benefits to Plymouth, the additional 104 LOC homes projected to add over $1 million in annual property tax revenue to Plymouth, with minimal impact on town services and the school system. It also would benefit by creating a contiguous open space, expanding the town-owned Briggs Conservation Land into one continuous area consisting of over 878 acres of permanently protected natural open space at no cost to the town of Plymouth. Open space protection. Pine Hills LLC will request consideration by the Wildlands Trust, which holds the conservation restriction on the 200-acre reserve land parcel along Long Pond Road, to also hold the conservation restriction on the 104 acres, with an appropriate stewardship endowment funded by Pine Hills LLC. Wellhead protection. A conservation restriction on the 104 acres would protect the potential wellhead site on abutting town land, should the town of Plymouth pursue a portable water source on the Briggs parcel at some point in the future. And finally, affordable housing. To date, the Pine Hills Affordable Housing Charitable Trust has funded qualified affordable housing projects in Plymouth, totaling nearly a half a million dollars in grants and contributions. Pine Hills LLC would increase the contribution to the trust from the current $250 per home to $1,000 per home for the 104 additional LOC homes that would be permitted if the proposed development plan is approved by Town Meeting. Approval of the warrant articles would increase funding for the trust, and therefore expand affordable housing opportunities in Plymouth. Thank you. I have a vivid memory of 20 years ago, when we were before Town Meeting, and after the vote, we were standing out in the lobby of the old Plymouth North High School Auditorium. And we recall folks coming out and basically putting their finger right in our chest, and basically saying, "We trusted you, now do the right thing." We have held that memory throughout the 20 years that we have been here in Plymouth, knowing the personal nature and the commitment that we had to try to bring something new and different and economically valuable to Plymouth. And that has really guided us through these past 20 years. We're very thankful for Town Meeting's support. At that time, we asked for your consideration, again, for these warrant articles, but it really has been Town Meeting that has given us this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you again for the opportunity to present to Plymouth Town Meeting. This process began more than 20 years ago, and the relationship that we have had with the parts of town, the town of Plymouth that function with us on a day-to-day basis have been terrific. But frankly, all of it couldn't have happened without Plymouth Town Meeting deciding that it was worth taking a risk and approving an idea where development would occur in a different way, where only 30% of the land would be built on, and for every acre that was built on, two acres would be preserved. And we appreciate that opportunity, and it has been the honor of a lifetime. We appreciate your consideration on these two zoning articles. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Catherine Holmes. I'm a Town Meeting member and Chair for Precinct 8. I'm also the Chairwoman for the Committee of Precinct Chairs. Today, I'd like to talk to you about Article 23. I have a presentation that I'd like to share with you. So Article 23 is a new general bylaw that has been designed to restrict the retail sale of puppies, cats, and rabbits. Plymouth has always been a leader in protecting the citizens, animals, and the environment by passing many local ordinances when the state and federal agencies could not view. This bylaw would have no impact on animal shelters, rescues, and breeders. So currently, Plymouth has no pet stores that sell puppies, cats, and rabbits today, which makes it a great time. This is great news, and it makes it a great time to pass this bylaw, because it will have no impact on any existing business. However, we are at great risk of a pet store, like a pet land, to move into Plymouth due to the enormous amount of empty space that we have as a result of businesses going under due to COVID-19 and the economy. A quick drive to Colony Place or the shops at 5, and you'll see large retail spaces that are now available for rent, perfect for a pet land to come in and compete with our already struggling pet stores, and unleash many new issues that we simply do not need in our town. The pet stores in Plymouth currently provide space for animal shelters and rescues to hold adoption days, and this is fantastic. This bylaw would not change that. We want that to continue. If a pet store moves into Plymouth that intends to sell cats, rabbits, or dogs, historically, they would get most of their quote-unquote "product" from a broker or a puppy mill. I'm going to use the word "puppy mill" throughout this presentation, but you could replace it with a rabbit mill or a cat mill, because the situation and the conditions that the animal goes through is exactly the same. So the mill, the animal mill, they do not source animals from responsible breeders. As no responsible breeder would sell a dog, cat, or rabbit to a pet store or a broker. Responsible breeders care about the well-being of their animals, and they want to place them in loving and carefully selected homes. Responsible breeders also keep track of the health of the animal that they adopt out, to catch any possible genetic conditions that they need to know about when making breeding decisions in the future. The animals adopted from rescues and breeders typically require a contract that outlines that the adopter has to return the dog, cat, or rabbit to the breeder or rescue if any issues occur. This is not the case with a pet store. So what is an animal mill or a puppy mill? Puppy mills are inhumane commercial breeding facilities. They market in mass production for the sale through pet stores and the internet. Their product is the puppy, the cat, or the rabbit. These poor animals are forced to live in squalid conditions with minimal veterinary care or human interaction. They never leave their cages or given the opportunity to live a joy-filled life like we allow our pets that we have in our homes. It is estimated that there is approximately 10,000 puppy mills in the United States that supply animals to pet stores. These pictures here are examples of actual mills that were filmed during an undercover investigation, and also one that was during a confiscation by animal control. The picture to your left is a rabbit mill. The middle picture is a puppy mill, and the picture to your right is a cat mill. And as you can see, they live in really tiny cages, they're really overcrowded, they're covered in filth, and this is their life, their whole life. And they just are breeding animals, and they stay there, and they never, they never get out until they die. So there are many issues with purchasing dogs, cats, and rabbits from a pet store, which most people are not aware of, because most people are not aware that that's where these animals are coming from. I've listed a few here, and these are really important, because, you know, most, the general public doesn't understand the cruelty that these animals are sourced from, and that the parents of these adorable animals in the window are living in such horrific conditions. So once they bring the animal home, it's often sick or has genetic or behavior issues, and results in expensive veterinary care, sometimes resulting in thousands of dollars spent, and even the death of their new beloved pet. There are thousands of consumer report complaints regarding sick and deceased animals purchased at pet stores. Puppy mill animals are often given up to local animal shelters as well, or they're abandoned in remote areas, which results in added cost to animal control organizations, and ultimately falling on the taxpayer, who has to cover the cost of food, shelter, and veterinary services until the health of the animals restored and proper forever home can be found. Now, in areas where these pet stores are located, the numbers of animals in the shelter tend to also dramatically increase. So it's of no surprise that disease thrives under such conditions. Puppies born in these facilities are frequently sick with contagious or congenital illnesses. They're loaded up with really strong antibiotics as a shortcut for proper sanitation and healthcare, and then they're transported to pet stores across the country in crowded trucks where they can transmit disease to other animals. The blanket use of these strong drugs, whether the puppy needs it or not, is believed to be linked to this drug-resistant strain of disease, like the one that the CDC has studied. The U.S. Health Authorities investigated a multi-state outbreak of multi-drug-resistant exposures, and conclusively linked the national pet store chain, Petland, to numerous human cases of this bacterial infection. These infections often cause severe and debilitating symptoms that were proven to be transmitted to humans from infected puppies sold in several pet land pet stores. According to the Center for Disease Control, since 2016, there's been multiple outbreaks with more than 150 people across at least 20 states that have been infected with these antibiotic-resistant strains of Kentville Bacter, and dozens across the country that have been hospitalized, including one teenager who's now confined to a wheelchair after working at one of these pet stores. Two of these cases were reported right here in Massachusetts. So what's the answer? The answer is to protect our community from the introduction of one of these pet stores by passing this bylaw. It will reduce their health risk to our citizens. It'll eliminate the taxpayer burden for potential increases of animals in the shelter, and it will prevent predatory practices offered by pet stores by offering crazy financial schemes to get people to buy the animals. And that's another thing that some people are not aware of, that when, when people go into these pet stores, the average price of an animal starts at around $500 and can go up anywhere to over, you know, $3,000. Most people don't have that kind of money, so a lot of pet stores, like a pet land, offer financing. But however, when you read the fine print, you then realize that the actual interest rates for some of these credits, the credit cards that they give you have interest rates of about like 118%. So Massachusetts is, is standing up for the voiceless throughout the Commonwealth with similar bylaws and ordinances that ban the retail sale of these animals. So you can see that Boston, Cambridge, Stonem, Pittsfield, Holliston, Marshfield, they have all passed very similar bylaws in their towns and cities so that they could protect their community. The language in my article is very similar to what was passed in Boston and Cambridge, and is identical to the, to the bylaw that was passed in Marshfield last fall. What is important to note is that the bylaw in Boston and Cambridge, and also Stonem, have been in place for four to five years, and there has not been a single incident of any issues with breeders, rescues, or animal shelters being impacted in a negative way, and there has been no financial impact on any town or city. This article has been endorsed by David Gould from the Marine and Environmental Affairs, and I also talked to several of our animal control officers who expressed support for this bylaw. In addition, numerous animal advocacy organizations have endorsed the bylaw, from MSPCA, the Animal Legal Defense Fund, the Humane Society of the United States, and the Animal Rescue League. My intention is to protect our community while giving a voice to the voiceless, to the horrors of animal mills, which are primarily funded by pet stores. I ask for your support in Article 23 and pass this extremely important bylaw. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Virginia Sinnett-Stutzen. I live in Precinct 5, and I've lived in Plymouth since 2009. And I've owned property in Plymouth since 2011, first at 22 Stoner Street, and now at 75 State Road, from where I'm currently speaking to you. I am a veterinarian working for the MSPCA. I graduated from Tufts University School of Veterinary Medicine in 2003, and have practiced in Massachusetts since 2009, first at Cape Cod Veterinary Specialists, and now at the MSPCA's Angel Animal Medical Center in Jamaica Plain. I have been practicing veterinary medicine for 18 years, and am board certified by the American College of Veterinary Emergency and Critical Care. I urge you to support Article 23. As you may have already heard, the measure will prohibit the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits from pet shops unless the animals come from shelters or rescue organizations. This legislation does not prevent consumers from acquiring a dog, cat, or rabbit from a responsible breeder, shelter, or rescue organization. I have treated many puppies, kittens, and rabbits who were purchased from pet shops and who were brought to the hospital for emergent care. The common illnesses I have treated these animals for are parvovirus in puppies, giardia in puppies and kittens, kennel cough pneumonia in puppies, distemper in puppies, panleucopenia in kittens, pneumonia in rabbits, and ileus in rabbits, which is a disease where they are unable to digest their food largely due to stress. Not all animals survived, and the ones that did were so sick their owners spent significant funds to ensure their animals were treated. While it is true that any puppy, kitten, or juvenile rabbit is more prone to disease than an adult, it is my experience that the majority of my juvenile patients have had a history that includes the long-distance shipment of a juvenile animal, usually from large-scale breeders, often in the Midwest, commonly referred to as puppy mills. And the shipments are usually to a pet store. Because the animals are shipped on 18-wheelers, disease can spread. In addition, these conditions are extremely stressful to animals, not only psychologically, but physically. Airflow can often be suboptimal, such that ammonia fumes from urine build up, damaging the respiratory tracts, making them prone to pneumonia. For example, kennel cough, which most dog owners experience as an annoying cough for a couple days, can become life-threatening pneumonia in these shipped dogs, and the majority of puppies I treat with this life-threatening form of pneumonia have a history of being recently obtained from a pet store. Similarly, the majority of dogs I treat with parvovirus, a life-threatening diarrheal disease of unvaccinated puppies, have a history of being obtained from a pet store and are almost always owned by their owners for less than four days. This is because the incubation period of the virus is so short, and the virus came from exposure to other puppies, usually in the shipping or pet store environment. While it is heartbreaking that the average case of life-threatening kennel cough pneumonia or parvovirus costs upwards of $3,000 to treat, that's an unrealistic, unexpected expense for many of our community members, especially when you consider that they have owned the pet for less than a week. And it's totally preventable. Dogs raised by a breeder in a single home experience none of these stressors, and so I rarely, to almost never, treat them for any of these preventable diseases. Rescued dogs are often immune to these preventable diseases by virtue of vaccination or just being an adult. Additionally, lessons learned from unfortunate outbreaks in decades past and published in the literature for all to read have created exemplary hygiene in shelters that exceeds that of some veterinary hospitals. So outbreaks such as these in reputable shelters are almost unheard of. Our own Plymouth Animal Shelter does an excellent job of both keeping animals in a clean, safe environment and finding them forever homes. I urge you to support Article 23, which should provide organizations such as our own shelter access to additional and more visible portals for adoption in our community. Finally, as a member of the community and a specialty veterinarian who only treats emergently sick animals, I hope I have been able to effectively illustrate for you the suffering, needless stress to vulnerable juvenile animals and disease that necessarily must occur, usually behind closed doors, to present that cute puppy in the window at pet shops. I urge you to support Article 23. Thank you.